A little call to order. This planning commission meeting for Tuesday, April 7, 2009. Those can call at all.
Chairperson John Craig Clapp.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Jason Hinkle.
Present.
Commissioners Cliff Paulson.
Here.
Paulus Harden here, James McInnis. Bob McCool.
Here.
Craig Kestisager. Michelle Rupmuster.
Here.
Tom Rucker.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Matt Magley.
Here.
Attorney Jeff Parker. And Planner Fred Fox.
Here.
Commissioner McInnis is walking in right now, so we'll keep marking this present. We'll move on to item three, public comment on consent agenda and non-agenda items. So if anyone in the audience would like to come address the commission on, James, either consent agenda or non-agenda items, this would be your opportunity to speak. About agenda items. You guys seeing none?
None.
Okay.
John, is this time like our ask questions about the round?
No, not yet. You'll get an opportunity to do that. It's coming.
I didn't take it.
Yeah.
We're just teasing.
That's right. And we have one item. Moving on to item number four, that is the consent agenda. There's one item on there approved over January, only in 2009 minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda or review the minutes. Commissioner Harden has made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Second by Commissioner Hinkle. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand.
Meeting minutes?
Meeting minutes.
I wasn't here. And you're good, so you've obtained the hand. So we have. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item number five, new business review and comment on the McCaslin Boulevard Colton intersection and trailhead preliminary design. Does staff have a presentation?
Thank you. John Hawkes, our Public Works and Utilities Director is here. He's going to provide history and update of where the project currently is. The board at their last work session requested the planning commission review and comment on the proposed project, so we scheduled the next meeting we could. John?
Good evening. As I said, my name is John Hawkes, Director of Public Works and Utilities. I wanted to start with a little bit of history on this project. This project's being considered at this time because it was included in Boulder County's list of projects for the transportation tax extension that was approved early last year. It was the only project on their list that was in the town of Superior, and really it was just for intersection improvements. No defined scope of work for it, just that they would put a project in for us. And so as a result of that, and the fact that the town parts in open space was discussing with Boulder County Open Space doing trailhead improvements and a new trail that leads to that intersection, we felt it was a good time to bring forward the intersection project immediately so that they could be designed together and make sure everything worked together once constructed. That's not typically how Boulder County works, but what we offered up was a partnership in that the town would cost share on the design side of it, and if necessary, front the money to get the construction done as long as we were first on their list to do projects. And so that was, I don't know if it was a new concept to them, but they agreed to it. So we are going to be funded in their first year of that transportation tax extension. And so we started at that point, this was back in May of '08, we did an RFP, found an consultant, started doing some basic design on intersection improvements. What was done was a, what we consider a 30% design, just really a layout and enough design to do a conceptual review, traffic analysis, and that sort of thing for both a fully signalized intersection and a roundabout. One of the existing problems, as you probably know, is that it's not truly a trailhead. It's not approved for any parking there, and there's no signal when you leave. So they just jump out into traffic when they feel it's safe. Definition of safe is varies per person. So we felt that this was an important project. Boulder County agreed, and we were moving forward with doing some kind of intersection improvements. In October last year, the consultant completed that layout design, and an analysis was done, including Alex Aronello, our traffic engineer, on the pros and cons of the two different styles of intersection and some general cost estimates. It was felt that the cost to build either one of them was relatively close. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they were within about 10%. And just the level of service that a roundabout can provide and reduce stopping, that sort of thing, the town board chose to go with a roundabout design. So at that point, we moved forward to do some additional design layout focusing on a roundabout design. At this point, we're at about 30%, I'm sorry, 70% completion of that design. It was brought back to the board and to you just for one more look at this project and comments. And I'll put it up on the screen now, if I can find the right button here. Here we go. So just a few comments about how this is laid out. As I said, it was designed with the trailhead layout at the same time so that they at least could work together once everything is constructed. Right now, this can be prepared to go off for bid, be constructed yet this year. Boulder County is looking at building the trailhead late in the year or early next spring. Afterwards, they'll be using mostly their own forces with it. So from the north coming down the hill, it will narrow down and will start a bit of a curve. Will include some signage noting the roundabout, reducing speed limits as you're entering this roundabout. The curve, not only does it, the narrowing of the road and the curve just psychologically slows people down also as they enter it, prepares them for entering this roundabout. And obviously, the main benefit feature of a roundabout is that traffic is always moving. There's not a time when you're sitting at a red light for two full minutes when there's no other traffic there. It's like being stuck on US 36 in a snowstorm. You'd rather be on the side streets, you're at least moving, but you're not sitting still. So size of this roundabout, this is a single lane roundabout. The inner radius is 44 feet, and then there is an 11-foot concrete inner surface here. Larger trucks will all up on that, and it can be used for, to get around if there's, if there is, for instance, a traffic accident that's been pushed off to the side to the curb, people can still get around that. Ideally, accidents are moved out of the lanes immediately. This is smaller than the one on Rock Creek Parkway, both in diameter and in the fact that it's single lane rather than double lane. McCaslin Boulevard is posted at 45 miles an hour, Colton Road at 35 miles an hour. Intersection is designed to reduce speeds to under 25. Typically, can be navigated at 18 to 20 miles an hour. Most people do go slower than that, but as I say, they are moving. Medians are incorporated in all four legs of this intersection. We will continue the landscape theme with the plantings and small trees that you see farther east on Colton and on Rock Creek Parkway. The center island will have probably one tree in the middle with some uplighting to really show it. People are not going to go just flying through this in the night. They're going to know that this is here. It's going to be visible, both through signage, through some lighting. There are street lighting, pedestrian lighting on, let's see, I believe it's eight locations. These are your lights around the intersection. They are set up so that they essentially front light a pedestrian that is trying to cross there. For instance, somebody who is driving southbound here, person standing in this crosswalk, they are lit from the front because of this light to this side of it. So this staggered placement of these lighting is done purposely for maximum visibility of pedestrians and others crossing this intersection, and at the same time, lighting the roadway. Rather than, as you see at Rock Creek Parkway, all of the lights are double armed just at the ends of these medians. This is designed a little bit more with pedestrians in mind. Continuing with pedestrians, there are sidewalks all the way around this intersection. Each of these crossings includes a safe island in the middle. This crossing distance is only 12 to 14 feet on any one of these legs, and a person trying to get across here only has to be concerned about traffic coming from one direction. They only have to be looking to their left to get to this safe island five steps across, and you're in an area. And then, once they're there, they can only be, only need to be concerned again about traffic from one direction, finish their crossing. I briefly touched on the lighting, eight light standards total. I think there is one, right, there's one more that's just off the page here. And the landscaping. Irrigation will be provided through the town's reuse irrigation system, even though there is a potable vein that goes along here. Just a brief excursion into discussing the trailhead design. This is set up for, I believe, 30 cars, four additional trailer parking spots for horse trailers. It includes a small restroom, a pavilion for picnic tables, bike racks, an informational kiosk. This sidewalk will extend all the way in onto this west side for handicapped accessibility. And then there will be a single gate here entering onto the Colton Trail. It is designed, this gate here is going to be relocated from its present position at the right-of-way so that the maintenance trucks that do need to use that Colton Trail can still access through there. This is as far as we are going to design the trailhead portion of this project. Boulder County, because they are building with their own forces, this is all they want. They want to take it from here. This is, this quadrant here is Boulder County Open Space property, and that's their contribution to this project. The town will be responsible for the cost for some upgrades from their standard trailheads. So that is really a brief overview of what this project is, and if you have any questions.
I'd just like to reiterate real quick to what John had mentioned on this project, that majority of this, these improvements to this intersection are being funded by Boulder County. It's a joint project with the town. I know there's been some discussion on the CAC list, and I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that the majority of these improvements are being funded by Boulder County.
That's right. Just quickly, are we, we're not commenting at this point on any of the trailhead design.
No.
Right? Just the roundabout.
Right.
Okay. Big side. You want to start down at this end?
If you want me to always start, I will. First time I've seen this design. Is there any effort by the entity who's responsible for McCaslin traffic to reduce the traffic flow on McCaslin to make this a single lane roundabout?
Well, first of all, the town is responsible entity for McCaslin.
Okay. It's not a county road.
It's not a county road. It's not a state road. It's a town road. It is, in this section, a single lane road, each direction.
Okay. It is currently, right.
Correct. Correct.
Let's see. Rock Creek Parkway, Colton is a four-lane road.
Correct. And that's what I was moving forward to. Colton will neck down about 200 feet or so east, dropping into a single lane longer before it enters into the roundabout, and then as people exit the roundabout and continue eastbound, it returns to its four-lane configuration.
Okay. So on the, just thinking of some of the things that I've seen, this Safeway delivery truck stuff that happens at night, and they have 53-foot-long vans typically associated with it, they're going to come down McCaslin, which is usually the way they come, and they go around about, do this roundabout. And with a 53-foot trailer doing this roundabout, they're going to have that trailer up on that overflow curb deal on a consistent basis, correct?
Yes. And that's how roundabout.
And they're aware of that, I guess, because that's going to affect their business shifting stuff and trailers and everything else. That's just one example. I don't, I don't know how, like, Flatiron's Land Rover gets their vehicles in. I think they come back on Flatiron's East. But some of the other vendors may do the same thing. Rock Creek Parkway doesn't have any allowance for truck traffic, so that could affect things down in the corner, even though it's not in the center section. That's what I see. Any thought to that?
Well, just, Rock Creek Parkway is designed for trucks also. So I'm not sure what you mean by it doesn't have any allowance for truck traffic.
Well, they discourage it strongly from using that road. There are signs posted.
That's correct, but it is designed for trucks. So yes, I mean, the primary truck route through town is Colton to McCaslin, and so that's why this was designed to allow even the 53-foot semi-tractor trailers.
Okay. And there's no future plan to go McCaslin with two lanes, like further up the hill?
To go to four lanes?
Mm-hmm.
Not that I'm aware of.
No, the board has discussed that in the past. It was a lengthy discussion, and it was associated with the possible Bear Hey development. That's open space now. The board has indicated it has no intentions of widening McCaslin to four lanes. That could change with the future board, but this current board has no intentions. The cost would be very large.
Oh, yeah. But it'd be even more if it has to reach the roundabout.
Well, as John said, it's been designed to accommodate the larger trucks, so I think we feel comfortable.
Good?
Yep.
Okay.
My question is, involves the, this is a very well-known portion of the Morgul-Bismarck, you know, road bike route that's been established for decades, and I wonder what consideration or what you guys took into consideration when you have pretty competitive cyclists who have been, and again, I like rotaries and I like traffic calming. I'm just kind of questioning that kind of a design in this area for this intersection. So what kind of consideration was taken regarding the regular bicyclists that take this route? This is going to be kind of a shock for them, I think.
Certainly. I'm going to actually go back.
And I only bring it up because it becomes then a safety issue.
Right.
And I have concerns about that, in that area as a safety issue.
The proper use of roundabouts, and because of the reduction in speed, bicycles should merge with traffic. That's the way traffic is supposed to use these. Now, for those slower cyclists who probably are not comfortable with something like that, you'll see right here, this angled ramp, this will allow a bicycle, more of a recreational user, to get off the roadway and not have to go through the roundabout. They can go up on the sidewalk. That's why this other section here is a much wider piece of sidewalk, but that's what, that's what this piece here is designed to do. They're on all of the legs of the intersection where, for lack of a better term, a bicycle can bail out. They can get out of the roadway, use the sidewalk to go around, and then eventually merge back into traffic if they so choose. The competitive cyclists that you're talking about, they're going to be going through this near the speed that a motorist has to slow down to. And so, again, that's a, you know, it's partially learning, but it's also signage. I mean, there is signage for most roundabouts that says bicycles merge with traffic, and that's the intention here.
Okay. I have no further questions right now.
Okay.
Apologize for being late, but I think I'll just listen for a while since I missed the presentation and come up to speed, so.
First question, I guess I was curious what trades, if any, were made of going with the single lane versus at least a partial double lane. Right now, you know, for example, coming off of Colton to the right or north onto McCaslin, there's an acceleration lane. So you're basically going from two lanes on Colton to one lane on McCaslin via that acceleration lane. It seems like that could have been maintained in this. I'm assuming there was a conscious choice. Do you know what the trades were for sticking with single all the way around the roundabout?
Yes. And the primary reason is traffic conflicts. Allowing, and you're essentially meaning this curve right here. Having one car going through this way and another car trying to also merge at the same time was viewed to be, it's going to lead to confusion and conflicts into it. And it was felt by the traffic engineers who looked at this that it was safer to neck down and have only a single lane entry, exit, and around the roundabout.
Okay. That makes sense, given the things I've seen happen at 88.
Right. And, you know, this, this little wave in the roadway does change where the traffic lanes are and constricts things a little bit. One of the, one of the other considerations on size on this roundabout was right-of-way constraints. There is additional space on this side, but because there's so much Boulder County money in this, they're building it, or they're paying for the construction. They did have some say, and they wanted to be able to push this trailhead as far east as possible. They would have preferred it to be built out in the right-of-way. This was as far east as we could get this, maintain traffic as necessary, and still allow, for instance, if there was a truck, a horse trailer coming, say, southbound here and turning into this, and they had to stop for a pedestrian here, they'll at least be out of the roundabout. Those are some of the minimum design considerations. We wanted to make sure a truck and trailer was completely out of the roundabout before they had to stop. And they'll have to significantly slow to make this corner anyway. And so we wanted to make sure there was enough space so they weren't blocking all the rest of the traffic. So there were some, there was thoughts that way. A lot of little factors fell into the design and sizing of all these lanes.
Okay. I guess the main other issue that certainly cropped up a lot seems to be, from what I've seen, is an issue at the 88th and Rock Creek roundabout is pedestrian safety. It's, it's difficult, and even, I guess, feeling like I'm fairly conscientious when I'm going through there, to feel like I'm watching for roundabout traffic at the same time that I'm watching for pedestrians. I'm curious, do we have any statistics on, have there been any? any related pedestrian accidents or even, I guess, vehicular accidents with our other roundabout that you're familiar with?
I am-
Do we have that data?
We did look at the data, and it's been honestly few and far between. I'm aware of one bicycle accident-
Bicycle vehicle?
Yeah, bicycle vehicle accident, and again, it was very minor. And that happened just late in the fall.
Okay. Is there, the one thing I've seen in different locations, not necessarily affiliated with roundabouts, are the essentially blinking pedestrian, you know, pedestrian-activated crosswalk signals.
Right.
Pros and cons, I mean, presumably the most obvious con is that you're stopping traffic when you may not have to, but that may not be a sufficient reason to not do that.
That is the biggest deterrent. However, not everyone buys that argument, and City of Golden is actually testing it. They have some roundabouts in the City of Golden. They have put the yellow flashing, I think it's even a yellow and a red bulb signal light at the entrance to roundabouts. It's in a very initial trial period, but what I've heard is the reaction is not good. That's really the only study I know of about that, but like you say, the biggest deterrent is it stops traffic when the purpose of a roundabout is to keep everyone.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would assume you'd have to set it back substantially, because if you stop somebody in the roundabout, then everything-
Right, I mean, if you're going to put in such a signal for pedestrians, it has to be done at the pedestrian crossing, right as people are entering the roundabout.
Sure. Well, but the pedestrian crossing wouldn't necessarily have to be at the roundabout. If you wanted to have ultimate safe, you know, focus on pedestrian safety here, I would imagine you'd take that wherever that crossing was going to be and shove it north or south away from this.
You could, because people wouldn't cross there.
It depends where the trail goes. I mean, it's mostly undeveloped property around there. If you don't run the sidewalk that way, then bike paths.
Problem.
I just mainly wanted to make sure that had been thought through, so.
People in the circle that are already in the circle exiting the circle are faced with whether pedestrian light is there or not, and then, in that case, it would be potentially stopping traffic in that circle. So.
Well, if it's where the pedestrian crossings are now, I would agree, or if you get 10 cars backing up for one pedestrian. That's why you'd have to push it away from the roundabout.
You know where I'm, can you point where?
Yeah, I, you're saying if there is a signal light here, or even, for instance, back here, somebody coming around at this point-
This way, yeah, at that point.
Ends up stopping right there.
Yeah, where is that signal on?
Yeah, I guess that seems like a solvable issue if you really wanted to deal with it, but I'm not sure it would make enough difference to be worth it. The only other issue on this intersection, my impression was that the cost was just too high, is that there's the existing bridge, so to speak, for Rock Creek that comes through there. Do you know offhand what the costs were estimated to be to turn that into a traffic-free pedestrian access across McCaslin?
Um-
To run the trail, basically, through that?
Right, to be able to, what you're mentioning is the culvert that Rock Creek goes through just to the south of this.
I remember it being looked at before and that it was expensive, I just don't remember how expensive.
Several times the cost of this intersection. I've heard the $1 to $2 million range.
Okay. Do you know if that came up in the board's discussion over the last year as part of this project?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
I did hear, I was at that board meeting, and there was public comment about that, and there was discussion about the expense being extremely high.
The stop, okay. I think that'll cover it for me, thanks.
There was, as I recall, when we approved the 88th Street Roundabout, there was a fair amount of education that went with that presentation from, I think from Alex, about roundabout design and safety, because I think we were all very concerned about that. We knew what a mess that intersection was. For those of you that lived here, at that point, we know the backup of traffic along 88th Street was an important issue, and also the safety with the schools nearby up the road on 88th Street. And so, maybe for the benefit of the commission, if you could, I don't know if you're versed in the kind of the benefits of a roundabout, but I thought it was helpful when we were making a decision before, and it might be useful to talk about that if you can.
Well, yeah, I can speak to it a little bit. The primary benefits of a roundabout are the reduced severity when there is an accident. Accidents in a roundabout are typically side swipes. The percentages of fatalities are near nil for roundabouts, especially slow-speed neighborhood roundabouts, as opposed to a regular signalized intersection where somebody could run a red light and you end up with these perpendicular T-bone accidents because of the increased speeds and just the direct impact of those cars. So, safety is one major factor advantage of a roundabout, the other being that it keeps traffic moving. You're not waiting for a signal when there's no other traffic. The due level of service analysis of roundabouts and other intersections, and for congested areas, a signalized intersection will go down to a level of service ERF, some of the worst ratings, much faster than a roundabout will. It's kind of like a spike in a bell curve type thing. A roundabout can handle at least as much traffic for a longer period of time than a signalized intersection can without causing backups. There's no sitting at a red light idling, and so there's a reduction in carbon emissions, and the long-term maintenance on a roundabout is less than a signalized intersection. You don't have the power costs for signals, replacement costs for signals. One thing many people don't realize is that to take a four-way stop intersection and put up a basic signalized intersection just for that, that change is close to a quarter million dollars. That's the rule of thumb right now. And so, there are significant costs that go along with the signalized intersection. So, that's, you know, those are several of the factors that work into the advantages of a roundabout. Disadvantages, of course, is being the learning curve. I think the residents of Superior have a little advantage, having had one here for a while. I do expect, if we choose to go forward with this, that there will be additional information put out, whether it's through the newsletter or other medians, including the cable channel of how to properly use a roundabout, just, again, get that information out to the citizens, whether it's a refresher or a first time for some people.
Thank you. No, at this point, at this level of documents, no cross-sections were provided to us. I'm assuming this is asphalt paving through the, just like, I think that's what's at-
That's correct, yes.
At 88th Street, so asphalt, and then, and some marking of some sort at the pedestrian crossings, not necessarily a different material?
That's correct. It'll just be pavement markings. We'll have, right now, this is shown to just have the crosswalk bars. These little markings along here, the diamonds are often referred to as shark's teeth. Other pavement markings yield to pedestrians, other signage, that sort of thing will be put in around here. Yes, all of it is proposed to be asphalt paving. The center island, including this large wide curve area, will all be concrete.
And the center landscaping, the center island landscaping looks as though relatively, is it burned as well, burned and then-
Burned slightly, yes, it's not going to be-
Collared trees, right? You're trying to create an obstruction in the center, right?
Right. Right now, the thought is just for a single large tree in the center with some uplift lighting on it to make it stand out.
Is that similar to what's at 88th Street?
No.
It's several trees or something.
Several trees, yeah, that's what I read.
Okay, it's a bigger circle.
Right.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I have.
I guess, let me start by saying that I like roundabouts on the east coast. We call them rotaries, and my experience growing up, I went to Massachusetts every summer to Cape Cod, and you drive through a huge two-lane roundabout, and the only problem was that everybody who used it coming from New York or Pennsylvania or New Jersey or wherever had no clue how to deal with it. And so, you would have traffic backed up for miles to get onto the bridge to get to Cape Cod. And that's my concern here, you know, thinking about the 88th Street Roundabout, my daughter rides her bike through that thing, or, you know, around it anyway, every day, going to Monarch. I don't think she's actually in the street, I think she's on the sidewalk, but she does it by herself, she's 12, hasn't been hit by a car, hasn't come close to being hit by a car. I remember when that was a four-way stop, and cars would be backed up all the way past Shamrock at rush hour, sitting and waiting. I haven't seen more than five cars, even with somebody who has no clue how to deal with a roundabout since then. So, for keeping cars moving, except for, you know, the occasional idiocy, they're great. My concern on McCaslin, though, is pedestrians. I spend a lot of time running on that, the Colton Trail, and getting there, you know, is tough, you know, but as I think about it, I rarely wait for the red light anyway, I just wait for a break in the traffic. There are only, you know, maybe four or six hours of a day when there's so much traffic that you don't get a break to get across from Colton across McCaslin to the trailhead. Then, you know, traveling north and south on McCaslin, I don't see that as such a big issue, but I do have a concern about bicycles. I think that, given the number of bicycles that ply that road, even with the, you know, the little escape route, we create sort of a hazard for them. But I think the biggest issue is pedestrians, and, you know, we talked briefly just a moment ago about adding a flash in something or other, a pedestrian marking, whatever. Well, if there's a pedestrian on the south crosswalk going from, across McCaslin from Colton to the trailhead, if I could open this box, we'd open it right here.
You're trying to get it here?
Sorry, go.
Speed.
Yeah, right, right there. So, oh, it doesn't work. All right, so, yeah, if somebody's traveling southbound on McCaslin Boulevard, they've got to stop in the circle anyway if there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk. There's only 12 feet, though, of space in the crosswalk. So, I don't see that as a horrible thing. I'm concerned about the fact that on a road that has much more traffic on it than Rock Creek Parkway does, we're only putting one lane in, and I understand the rationale, but I don't know that, I don't know that I agree with it.
Yeah, I guess you asked the question about traffic count numbers.
Yeah.
Which weren't provided to us, or an analysis of the traffic count numbers, but I assume you feel as though this is going, this is going to meet the current and whatever future needs are anticipated along McCaslin.
Yes, the traffic counts were looked at, current and future, and it was determined that this would service that. And then, I just wanted to make one other comment. For unfamiliar users, for traffic in general, the single lane roundabout is the safest and easily, most easily navigable. It is when you get into the multi-lane roundabouts where you can have some additional weaving, you can have somebody in the circle and somebody who can merge in at the same time, that a lot of the confusion comes in, and the risk increases.
So, this is also at the bottom of a hill, and the Rock Creek Roundabout has a fairly wicked, as in dangerous, especially during an ice storm, reverse cant to it, right? So, instead of being sloped this way so cars going around it, it's sloped this way, and I'm assuming that that was sort of a design feature to slow cars even more, but what it tends to do is create a freaking skating rink that's kind of scary during a weather event. And I'm just wondering, I don't see, I feel as though, I feel as though this trip to the planning commission is a little perfunctory, since we're already this far along in the design process, and I don't have the documents that we would normally look at. Like, I don't see a drainage plan, I don't see elevations, I don't, I'm not seeing, you know, I don't see the grating, I don't, all that stuff. That hasn't been created yet.
Yes, this is DD.
This is at 70% design, this is fully designed.
Okay.
The board requested at their last work session that the planning commission look at this, at this meeting.
Okay. So, we'll see it again when it's complete?
We-
Wait, so, perfunctory? Okay. So, I just, I mean, I'm a little at a loss to understand what it is that we're doing here tonight, but my concerns are getting pedestrians across safely, that drainage isn't going to be done properly, and so we'll end up with huge puddles and reverse cants and people sliding all over the single lane intersection in an ice storm. We don't have the best track record to keep in our streets during weather. And then, you know, what happens when it is time to widen McCaslin? Do we spend another $800,000 of the town's money to tear the thing out and put in one? So, because then it won't be the county buying it, so.
Well, prior to you arriving, that was discussed, and the board has no intentions of widening McCaslin.
Actually, I was here.
Okay, well.
And it could be that this board doesn't, but at some point, that road's going to need to be widened.
Well, then, the future board's going to have to take that into consideration.
It's going to be additional costs if the future board decides-
I'm just asking that, what it is, because I'm on the planning commission, so I'm looking at the plan for the future, because that's sort of what we do here. I'm trying to understand what accommodations are being made for the future for needing to widen this, and what I heard you say just a minute ago is, there's none.
There's none.
Because we've got no place to go. So, then, it gets torn out and it becomes a four-way intersection or a three-way intersection again. I'm not, I'm just trying to understand what is the plan, because while we don't have a plan now under this board, that's good till the next election, which is, what, April or next April or whatever it is, right? So, what's the plan to save the taxpayers the money of having to tear this thing out and put another one in when we do need to widen the road? Is there a plan?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Should that happen, the, essentially, just the outer edges could be reconstructed if there was that decision to go to four lanes in a larger roundabout. It does not have to be completely torn out and re-
But you don't have right-of-way to do that, right? At least on the west side?
On the west side, there might be sufficient right-of-way. On the east side, it's much more restricted.
Okay.
And then, we also have the constriction with the creek slightly to the south.
Okay.
By the time we jump into that multi-multi-million dollar, two-lanes to four-lanes project, I guess I'm having trouble imagining anything we would do on this that would make much of an impact on that overall budget, so it doesn't bother me as much, but.
So, that's it. Aside from, you know, not having an opportunity to actually plan this thing, those are my concerns.
Okay. I have a question about this gate up here.
He's got this little thing up.
Uh-huh, there we go. This gate right here, is that for when the park is closed?
Are you seeing this dash line here?
Yes.
That's actually a storm sewer culvert that exists underneath there. There's anticipated that, this will be a depression to collect some storm sewer, bring it across, and then I'll let it back into the existing ditch to go to.
Is that what this thing is here, too?
Right, there was a catch basin shown right there.
Okay. That was, I was envisioning that as a- Okay. That was, I was envisioning that as a gate and if that was.
No, there is an existing gate here that's going to be removed, relocated down here. There's not going to be a gate to close off the trailhead.
Okay. All right. Then that's not a concern. I guess I'm not too worried about the future expansion of McCaslin because I don't see what event is going to cause traffic to increase to the levels, development levels that would require that. So I guess to me, that's not a big concern. I like roundabouts and I think it makes sense in this area. I, my initial reaction was concerned about the speed on McCaslin, how that would be controlled. But after hearing the many measures, I feel pretty satisfied that that's going to take care of that.
Couple of questions and some comments. That distance you talked about here from, no, I'm flashing, thank you, from the crosswalk back to, can you stack two, it sounded like you could stack a horse trailer, what, two cars?
I'm sorry, no. The only place we were looking at that concern is here. Because of this, this tight turn, traffic flow for the, for the trailhead will be coming into this entrance, turning this way, looping back around to exit. So we saw the potential for a trailer from whatever direction entering here and coming to an almost a stop because of this sharp 90-degree turn.
So they need to be out of pedestrian?
Right. We wanted to make sure that they could be far enough along that they weren't impeding traffic around.
So what is, how many cars could, can stop here for a pedestrian? How much, what's this distance right here before you're blocking the circle?
Probably one car.
One car, okay. This is, these questions aren't in any particular order and this isn't really related. Was the decision made to pave this or with asphalt, cement, or is it dirt or crushed asphalt? Does that decision have been made?
That decision hasn't been finalized.
I am also not terribly concerned about four lanes. I think, I'm just not seeing growth being a big issue in Superior. I think, I mean, I like the concept of a roundabout. My biggest concern, as is everyone's, is the pedestrian safety and bicycle safety. I agree with you that hardcore bicyclists, or they're going to merge, they know what to do, they know how to handle this and navigate it, I believe. I'd be more concerned about cars than bikes. And I like the idea of the bail. I think that's great. I noticed that in the plan when I first looked at it and figured that's what it was for. My biggest concern is I, in my opinion, the town of Superior is not pedestrian safety conscious, at least living on this end of town. I know there's a difference in Rock Creek. I see it. So I see Rock Creek crosswalks remain painted for the most part where Surrah District and Original Town, they're just gone. They've been gone for a year. You know, they're just gone. Signs don't exist at crosswalks in the Surrah District or the Original Town area. So I do have a bias to believe that we're not really pedestrian conscious for everyone. But I know there's a slight difference in the Rock Creek area. And my concerns are around, are we going to put enough in place to promote pedestrian consciousness as well as safety for this? I would like to see us consider a slight raise. And, I mean, I'm not in favor of bumps. Huge raises, I have to go through them in the boulder and they're relatively annoying. But some of the new ones that they're doing are much more gradual, but it's clear that you're entering into what is supposed to be a pedestrian safety area. And, but doesn't really impede your speed if there are no pedestrians. It just makes it conscious. The green signs that are now being used over the yellow ones are to make it clear that you're entering a pedestrian, potential pedestrian area. And then the maintenance of those areas so that they stay. And in this area where we're promoting, I mean, we are promoting heavy pedestrian use in that intersection with this trailhead. We, as a member of the open space committee and being involved in this design of the trailhead, this is a flagship trailhead for the town of Superior. It's going to be nice. I mean, it's designed for horse trailers and parking and, you know, picnic area, you know, historical markers, connections from Original Town. And it's going to create, and besides the flagship for Superior, it's going to be a regional draw. We've now created one of the coolest loops around. And it's awesome. I mean, with the single trail going back, back over to Marshall, I mean, the loops, small and large, that are, that connect up with Marshall Mesa are going to be phenomenal. I can't wait to see them. But I think that's going to create heavy use of this, this area. So my only comments are, I am concerned about the pedestrian safety. I like the idea that it's narrowing down to 12 feet. But we've got the pedestrian bail there, not the bail, but the brake in the middle. I think that's going to help a lot. Another question, one question I have though, is are we going to change the speed limit? Is there going to be a change in speed limit back here? Or are you just expecting the approach of, the approach to the circle to be enough to reduce traffic? Are you going to lower, is the speed limit going to be lowered when you hit a point here to 35 or 25?
Our recommendation is to step the speed down. As, as you're approaching this from 45 to 35 to 25 and then, and then allow it to go back up afterwards. We're not going to rely on just the roundabout and the narrowing to do that. You need, that creates, that additional signage also creates additional notice for entries.
And is that our decision to make or is that a county decision?
It's town roads.
Town's decisions, okay.
To comment a few, on a few of your other issues, the striping and the street marking, as we've been doing throughout town, we're gradually switching from painted markings to these thermal plastics that are going to last in the timeframe of five years rather than five months, which we've seen in the past. Yeah. We put them down in May and by September, October, they're virtually unreadable.
Right.
You've seen some of that. We're, that's a gradual program. We're going to be switching over to those just because of the long-term reliability. You know, a lot of these that were put in last summer are still like new. So, and that saves staff time, it's better serviceability to the public, that's right. And then just in general, bike and pedestrian safety was very much a concern when we looked at the option of going with a roundabout for all the reasons that have been mentioned here. And we really feel that this configuration is as safe as we can make a roundabout. That, you know, there's inherent flaws. Roundabouts are designed for vehicles. And so you do what accommodations you can for bicycles and pedestrians. And we feel that this is as much as could be.
Yeah, I just feel we have to be real, I mean, we have to nail this because of the, of this trailhead. Because I think you're just going to get a lot of pedestrian traffic and, so. So the only comment, you know, is considering, you know, doing a raised, something raised, something to make it very clear, as well as signage back here that pedestrians do have right-of-way, which I see, which I know we have in some parts of town, not at all, not at all the crosswalks. But those would be my comments. So think about raising that a little bit and making sure there's good signage back there. Okay, that's all I've got. Thanks.
On the roundabout itself, that apron or whatever you call it, it's not flat, right? It's, it's at a slope?
It's relatively flat. It has maybe a 1% slope to it, about the same as the crown of a road. It has a slight raised ramp up to it. So it's not at the same level as the pavement. It's slightly higher, four to six inches ramped up and then just a gentle, like I say, 1% slope to it. So it's almost like a raised sidewalk on the inside.
Kind of like the curb cuts in Rock Creek to get you to a driveway.
Well, my question is, what about snowplows? Are they going to be able to, if we get a 12-inch, two-foot snow or something, they would be able to handle the snow on that apron? Since it is a pretty narrow, the street's narrow. And where would that snow go? I mean, would they put it off to the side or would they pile it in the middle of the roundabout?
If that apron was plowed, it would be plowed to the center. The primary plow operation will be to clear the driving lanes, the main driving lanes, and that will all be pushed to the outsides. And then as we widen, you know, similar to what we do with turn lanes and other areas, to come back, that would all then be, they can just angle the plow to the inside, plow it to the middle.
That's the only question.
Okay. Got prompt any other questions?
Go ahead.
Well, I have a, I don't know, it's more of a comment, looking at the landscaping plan and then in light of the discussion regarding pedestrians. To me, and if you look at the landscaping that comes in very close to the crosswalks, to me, that could present distractions and/or, you know, any kind of, I don't know how, how high these will be and then therefore how high the plants will be. But if you're coming around and you're trying to watch what you're doing and a pedestrian pops over and they were kind of obscured from, because of.
Behind a tree or something?
Behind the tree, behind the shrubs. Again, this idea that we're trying to make this pedestrian usable, I just find that the, the leading and trailing plantings around that could, could become either distractions or actual physical barriers to effectively seeing someone as you're concentrating on all these other things you're trying to do coming around the roundabout. My own suggestion would be keeping it for both cost and maintenance and safety. Keep that really simple in there.
Yep. And along those lines, the concept, the idea is that the shrubs would be very low ground cover shrubs, knee-high type thing at the most. And the trees would be overstory trees, not evergreens that are solid all the way up. But, you know, bring these in as eight-foot tall bald and burlap trees where there is clear view up to five feet above the ground or so.
Okay.
And then as they grow, that, that will increase. So, yes, that thought was brought in.
That has been considered. Okay.
Hopefully the only obstruction is a four-inch trunk, you know, 10 years from now.
Yeah. Okay.
Another comment I had, thought of, and I forgot to address the first time around is the sheet draining in this area is obviously going to be affected by this series of roads and this web that goes on with the curbs and everything. Currently right now, that whole area is basically flat paving, a little going on. And that's the low depression with all hills coming from all directions into that basin is what I call it. And I would suggest that we have that taken into account all the way on the drainage issue. You're going to have a big ponding situation happen in a 100-year flood-type rainstorm. I would imagine it's going to be pretty, pretty interesting.
We don't have a complete grading plan to show you, but that has been looked at. And they know the, essentially the centerline grades of these. They will be able to accommodate that drainage. And with the creek immediately to the south, if we're in a position where this is flooded, then there's a lot more that's flooded.
Oh, yeah.
We'll have much safer problems.
It's going to catch a lot of the.
Anything else? Craig?
I just, I got, I got one more. Has anybody checked to see what, going around this roundabout in a 53 or 50-foot, 56-foot trailer is going to do to the shifting of the load of the, you know, the pallets on the grocery truck? I mean, is it, do we know? Have significant or if that's significant at all? Are my bananas going to be perennially bruised?
Well, I would certainly hope not. That specific issue, I mean, directly to that, no, I don't believe that's been addressed. This is not going to have the super elevation that you see at 88th Street because as you've said, it is relative, for this area, this is relatively flat. And so we're not going to have some of that side slope. We're looking at 1.5% crowns on this to the center and then just that, that raised curve on the inside. So trucks go over and navigate obstacles much larger than this on a regular basis. So we don't really believe it's going to be a problem, but nobody's ever looked at it exactly to that. See your.
Thanks. Anything else? Anyone?
Just one last question. So what kinds of lighted intersection alternatives or light, you know, light changing schemes had been pursued in tandem with also looking, looking at the roundabout? I mean, I think you said something about, and people have mentioned something about, you know, adding a left turn lane or whatever. But the other part of the discussion I hear is regarding traffic, you know, not moving, you know, not, because they're caught behind lights that don't seem to be maybe.
Smart.
Smart for, for the situation, you know, because there are different kinds of schemes you can do during different times of the day to, and weekends, just as we know for most of our lighted intersections. And so I guess I ask how much that was explored so that we just had smarter intersections to handle the flow? Because it's not real heavy flow. The, you know, a roundabout is great when you have, as you were pointing out, heavier flow. So it keeps things moving. That, that's really not so much the situation there.
Except for two hours in the morning and two hours in the evening.
Yeah, right.
Right. Yes, you can adjust the timing on signalized intersections, but there's still minimum green times, minimum red times, that kind of thing that will always work into it. Even on a detected intersection is what you're referring to, one that has loop detectors or cameras to detect when a car is waiting, there's still minimum cycle times.
Right.
That are going to affect it. And that does still create, even with, as you call it, a smart intersection, a reduced level of service compared to a roundabout.
We all have lights to deal with. I mean, it's, it's just kind of part of life. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite anyone in the public to ask questions or comments at this time. And they'll have five, five minutes.
My name is Ron Kenny. I live at 903 South Wadi Court in Superior. I appreciate the opportunity. You know, one of the things I've noticed here is a lot of my questions or answers is based on the questions you asked as well. But a couple of things I have a concern about also is that, number one, if we don't use the funds for this particular roundabout, can we use the funds for another intersection? Or can the city use those funds to do what they should be doing with it in terms of prioritizing other, other types of projects?
The money for this project is coming from Boulder County as part of the trailhead effort. So it's.
That's not, not quite a true statement, right?
The money for, is for the intersection.
It's for improvements to the intersection?
Improvement. But it, we looked at two designs, a full intersection with signalized lights and the roundabout as part of possible improvements to the intersection.
Well, but. So it's earmarked by the, by the county for this intersection?
Correct.
Okay. Is that your question?
Well, yes, that's part A. And the other part is, yes, as a planning committee, why couldn't we use as funds and everything, maybe to select a different intersection like Colton Road and Indiana where all the traffic and all the kids are coming across there going to K through A? You know, that seems to me to be a lot more dangerous and a lot more important than this is at this point in time. The other thing I have a concern about is merging down from two lanes to one lane on these, all these avenues and coming into something you're decreasing the speed of rapidly. Because you know some people are not going to be doing that. And trying to maneuver those turns and everything, I have a concern with that either, especially when you have pedestrians involved. And there hasn't been any comments or any kind of suggestions brought up about putting bridges somewhere over these where people will be completely safe in doing that. That's the second thing. Number three, I also have a concern with the fact when a fire engine comes through here and you have one lane of traffic there, how are they going to get through to go north or south on McCaslin? Because we have a fire station down there that uses that road to get access to the other parts of the city.
Correct.
And that's a concern. Also, I think maybe we ought to look at the, the planning in terms of the traffic patterns and things a little bit more closer than what we have. I don't think we could, it's a good thing. I mean, this is really pretty. It's really nice. But I think we need to have a lot more detail and a lot more study data about exactly what the effects are going to be, not only for the public, but also for commercial if this is done. And I'm sure you're aware that to make this even more congested, that Richmond Homes is proposing to build 38 homes right in that 11-acre plot next to the Eldorado School, which is going to add even more congestion to it and more kids there. So I don't know if that was taken into consideration or not. But those are the things I think that. that some people haven't thought about, and I think they ought to be able to get you more involved in that before anything is done, even to this degree. And it seems to me the county money is our money too, so the town of Superior should have a better say into what, where that should be distributed and how that should be used, especially on projects like this. And I personally haven't seen an issue with that particular intersection. I understand the trailhead piece of it, I think it'd be great, and I think it'd be a good use of money for that. But the intersection itself, I have not seen one chewing problem or one accident there in the seven or eight years I've lived here. And it seems like everybody is very, very considerate when they go through that area as well. I'm on orange, I guess I'm almost done.
Thank you.
So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sandy Pennington, 3002 Mike at Court. I come through this intersection probably six, seven, eight, nine times a day, depending on how heavy the air and load is, how many meetings I'm going to, et cetera. And I'd just like to ask this Ford, why was this project initiated in the first place? Of all the intersections I go through, this is probably the least problematic of any one. I've never seen an accident there. I do know traffic is heavy. I wouldn't even say it's two hours a day in the morning and the afternoon. I would narrow it down to a little less than that. So, can I just pose out to the board why the project in the first place?
My general impression is the county's preferences had a lot to do with the timing and prioritization. Is that true? I mean, if the county hadn't come forward with this as one of the projects they wanted to do, was this on our priority list already or not?
This was on the town's priority as an improvement for the intersection, simply because of what John Hockis mentioned earlier, is people who do use that trail and park there are basically merging onto McCaslin or Colton on an unregulated intersection, because they have no light or anything, so-
But can't that be resolved simply by the addition of a fourth light? We've got three lights right now.
Correct. So, this was identified as improvements to the intersection. The county has identified it as improvements to the intersection because they want to make improvements to the trailhead. And so, then the question became, what type of design do we want to see? Do we want to see a four signalized light intersection or a roundabout? And that was a discussion between the Boulder County Planning Staff, town staff, the town board, ultimately was the one that made the decision to go with the roundabout design.
Well, in my life, motosuperrandays do no harm. So, I would proceed with the study as to what the situation is I'm trying to resolve here. Are we having lots of accidents? I'm not seeing accidents. Are we having a lot of pedestrian or bike-related incidents? I'm seeing none of them here. I'm really not seeing much of traffic slowdown that is anywhere near traffic congestion during rush hour in other parts of the neighborhood or other thoroughfares. When we in Superior bought our houses, I'm a Rock Creek homeowner, and we had to sign declarations. I had to sign a declaration that said 470 might come through. Had to sign the declaration that the natural gas line is underneath and might explode. And I had to sign a declaration that McCaslin may eventually become a multilane thoroughfare. It may be widened. So, we in Rock Creek were under the impression all along, and when we chose where to build our house there, is did we want to be near McCaslin when it may become a bigger thoroughfare and may in fact be widened? And so, as a homeowner, it's perplexing to me why, if that is the impression, why then we're actually narrowing it down and potentially causing harm to pedestrians, to bicyclists? And I'm thinking about the wild man coming down that at 45 who may not know it's been narrowed, or he's been drinking, or he's doing something, and he actually kills himself going through the roundabout. So, I think there may actually be some driver danger possibly during that entry here that wouldn't have been here before. So, I'm not really convinced that it meets the criteria of do no harm. Like you to take that into consideration.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
George Cufford, 109 South Fourth. The purpose of that road was to be a main thoroughfare in 1960, early '70s from Casslin Bowl, from Highway 36 to 128. They did widen it to four lanes, and you're choking it down to one lane on a roundabout you don't need. What do I do with my truck? They're 60 feet, 68 feet long. Leaving here and going down to get fuel down at Safeway's down there. The other way you can go is Rock Creek Parkway. You say a truck will enter there, so what? I don't understand where the staff is coming from. They're not giving people time enough to put the input, what they want and what they don't want.
Thank you. Any other questions that came up as a result of the comments?
What about the fire truck?
Yeah, I was just going to ask about the fire, about just the fire truck, and if that poses any issues for, from the public work standpoint or public safety.
The brief answer is yes, fire trucks are taken into consideration. They can navigate this. We have had some discussion with the fire department. They're going to be reviewing these drawings also, offering comments back. That's the short answer.
It's not that it can't navigate it, it's if there's a car in front of it, what happens then? I think was more the-
It could go the other way through the intersection, right?
Could.
If it had to.
Hope another car's not coming around.
Well, right.
Well, and we're talking about where seconds count, so, and that's where big arguments where all these are is, I mean, a circle's going to add, could add, 15, 20 seconds to a response time over life. That's what works. That's the concern, I think.
Well, the siren's going. People are conditioned to stop and pull aside, well, there's not much place to pull aside. And now, you've got a truck going, and cars are going, "I'm stopped, I'm stopped." And where's the truck able to go?
Well, similar to how cars don't stop in the middle of an intersection, you clear it first, then move to the side.
People understand.
That would be on page 12 of the Rotary Navigation Instruction Book.
Thank you. Rotary Navigation Instructions.
I'm kidding.
It really does come down to common sense.
I understand. Okay, thank you. We're actually, I think, asked for this to review and comment, and so, if there's something that wasn't satisfactorily answered, I guess, by the staff, if you'd like to provide a comment to the trustees, this would be the time to trustee enumerate those.
I would just say, a lot of the comments that came up, we're talking about the larger-scale trucks, we're talking about turning radiuses. I would say, these are, what I term, from my experience, DD drawings, so, design development, in case somebody knows the term. Basically, there's a lot of details that haven't been outlined on this set of drawings that need to be cleared up, but I would say those all need to be taken into account and thought all the way through on this. Still have a lot of questions, like James says, about this two-lane to one-lane thing in the future. I don't know where we're going with that, but right now, with the town board the way it is, you're into roundabouts and single-lane traffic, so if that's what we're asking to do, is respond to the short term, that's what we're doing.
And my comment is, I guess I would have wanted to just incrementally make the improvement here first to add the light so that people coming from the open space and proposed open space parking would have better egress. And other than that, I think this is a way highly engineered and expensive intersection now, and I'm not sure that that's really what we needed to be doing at this point.
I'm all in favor of a roundabout 88th. I would hate to think of every time I went down Rock Creek Parkway or came across 88 that I had to stop at a light and just set a light. I agree, there's a learning curve, and I agree that some people are just never going to learn the proper way to use it. They want to stop and just wait and wait and wait and wait. I mean, you can always pick out the situation that's not ideal. I think, thinking back, when we were talking about McCaslin going to four lanes, that was when the town was looking at more development in town, which is not going to happen now. And I think the other concern was somehow 470, future improvements would dump traffic into the area, so I don't know where that would stand, whether we're still going to have the possibility of some type of addition to 470 causing more traffic to funnel through McCaslin. But that's the only situation I could see that would add traffic to a four-lane. Going to two lanes, I'm all in favor of choking it down and slowing it down too. You know, people come off the hill and they're going pretty fast through there, so I'm all in favor of slowing it down. If people don't like the intersection that are just crossing town, then they'll find a different way to get across town. I do think the overall design that we're presented with is lacking information. It's hard to look at it and really pick it apart, but if we're just looking at a concept design, working along with Boulder County to get a trailhead and a more visible, more better appearance to that entrance to town, then I'm in favor of the roundabout.
I second essentially all of that. I think, you know, when you bring up the concern with out of control or just generally drivers that shouldn't be on the road in general, from what I've seen and heard, I'd much rather be in a roundabout in that situation and have curbs between me and that person than not knowing every time I, you know, cross a green light, hoping that person that's coming up kind of fast, but not sure on that red light is going to plow right through. So, for, I think for all of the reasons Commissioner Presto stated brought up and that, I'm pretty happy with the decision that was made there. I think in terms of priorities, if I'm following the history of this correctly, it certainly makes sense that something had to get done here, and if we're going to do it, let's do it right. I can see the counterargument of, why did you just throw a light in there when you could have done it right? And solve additional problems at the same time. It feels to me like the right decisions are getting made at the right time, so.
Matt, you never really answered the question, could the money that's being used for this roundabout be used elsewhere? Is the county giving us money?
They are. John, my impression was it was just for this intersection.
That's correct. The way this got written into the transportation tax extension, it was for this intersection. So, no, it really cannot be used anywhere else.
I just think it's overkill. I think it's, you know, I'm all in favor of making town prettier. There's a lot of reasons why this doesn't work, and again, I'm in favor of roadways in general. I just think it's overkill here. There's not enough detail for me to really, you know, we don't know what happens when a fire truck and a car meet. I assume the fire truck can push the car out of the way or, you know, sit there and honk its horn until the car moves. We don't know what's going to happen when a big truck full of stuff, especially heavy stuff, that isn't quite tied down properly goes around it and does the load shift when it hits the thing and the apron in the middle, and does it shift it enough to throw the stuff, you know, to the side and then out through the trail? Or we don't know that. We're assuming that it won't happen. But my biggest concern is we don't have a plan for what happens if our efforts of pedestrian safety fail? What's the next plan? And then, we don't have a plan for what do we do in the future when we need to widen this road? And I think it's just a bad idea to not have that plan in place. I'm not saying that we need it, but, you know, just to just say, okay, well, Rotary, you know, at this point, in this economy, you know, I mean, there's other things that the money could be used for that make more sense, and I just, you know, I agree, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, and that intersection's not broke yet. So, you know, I've driven out of that trailhead 5,000 times, I don't know, in the 15 years I've been in town. Yeah, but really? I mean, that's kind of a, it's not, you know, I just think that there are better priorities. To me, if the trailhead is going to be increased in size and parking and usage, it definitely makes sense to me to do something to that intersection to improve pedestrian safety. And to me, this design addresses that. I think it'd be much safer than just having bikes and pedestrians crossing full lanes of traffic. To me, it makes a lot of sense.
How much would it cost us to park a cop there?
Uh, you know, I don't know.
Because I bet that'd go a long way toward getting people to slow down, pay attention.
It's a long walk away.
Bet it's less than $4,000 a year.
$80,000 a year.
So, $400,000, you know, and get five years of a cop sitting there, people would warn.
Moving on.
Assuming you got my comments earlier on the pedestrian, the raised sidewalk, Matt?
Yeah.
You got those written down already, so I don't need to go over those again? Okay. I, you know, I'm in favor of an improvement to this intersection. I like the idea of a circle. I do feel like the improvement that's being made to this trailhead is very significant, that it is going to increase use significantly, and the exit from that area needs to be improved. I don't think we're being asked whether we like a roundabout or don't like a roundabout, because my understanding is we're not here. This decision was made by the board back in October.
That's right.
And I wonder how much it was publicized and clear. I mean, it was there. I mean, I saw it. I came to the meeting. I do pay attention, so, I mean, you know, this has come up because it's getting bantered around, it's hit the CAC, and it's being discussed, and so now, it's, the public's been made, more of the public has become aware of this project. But this project was in a public board meeting, I don't remember the exact date, and a decision was made, and it was publicized and all that good stuff. And so, unfortunately, although your comments, the public comments that were made today will go, the board will see them in our minutes. Is that fair to say, Matt? The public comment that was made? All those?
We don't list the specific comments, no.
Okay.
We list that.
Okay. Can we-
Right, unless we-
Unless we request?
Or we include them in our comments.
In our comments. Well, I mean, I would, I mean, I'll do that, because I think, just because we have some additional public comment that was made to us, thinking they were potentially talking to us about whether this is a good idea or a bad idea, I'd like to see those entered in. And I don't have them in complete detail, but Ron had talked about the funding question from the county, whether we can use that funding in other areas, and what input did we have with that funding? The concern about merging two lanes to one, the comments about consideration of pedestrian bridges to go in there on the emergency vehicle plan, which we did talk about, bringing up an additional traffic pattern analysis, detail and study being done, the concern of Richmond's 38 homes being added, and how that might impact congestion. Sandy mentioned using that intersection seven to 10 times a day, and not really seeing any problems with it. And asked why we're initiating this, who and why is this being initiated, because it's not a very problematic intersection. I know you said a lot more, and I hope that generally covers it. And then George expressed concern about the 60-plus-foot trucks going through there to get to fuel at Safeway and how that's going to impact it. So, I would like to see those comments go to the board, so I'll repeat those. But I am in favor. I think this design is fine. I think we need to do something in order to support this trailhead. And my big concerns that are already down, which are around pedestrian safety and making sure we're dealing with that, because I think we're going to have increased pedestrian traffic, significantly increased pedestrian traffic as this trailhead's built. And the connection trails, there are additional trails that are being built, as you guys may or may not be aware. There's a trail going from Colton to Original Town that's going to connect with the Coal Creek Trail. That's actually going to be done this year. Next year, it's approved to have a trail extend from Coal Creek all the way over to Marshall, which basically connects Coal Creek and Original Town, or the dirt road portion of Coal Creek and Original Town, all the way- road portion of Coal Creek and Original Town, all the way around to 66th?
Yes.
At where that trailhead is at Marshall. So, now, we are creating a very significant and attractive loop, and so, and this is going to be a premier trailhead on that loop, so, you know, that's just a piece of information as to why this, I think this intersection improvement is important, and if it may not be apparent in the first year, I think it's not gonna take long until people realize the benefit of this trailhead, and it's gonna draw people into this, so, thanks.
I agree with what Bob and Flynn have said, you know, about the trailhead. If it's gonna be a regional and if people are gonna use it, we need to improve it. It just doesn't work the way it is right now, and, you know, and I don't know which, what other way to go other than the roundabout.
Okay.
I was just gonna reiterate that the part of our work plan for the planning commission was, one of the items was, and is part of our, I think the change in the code, was that we would comment on certain public improvements, capital improvements items, and so, that's how this thing came to the planning commission.
I agree.
And I just, I think the biggest issue I have, I would say that I'm in favor of roundabouts, and I'm in favor of this roundabout, for a variety of reasons, which I'll go into in just a second, but the issue I do have is what James has brought up, and that is, and other commissioners, that the level of detail in the plans limits us to some degrees to how much we can comment on what we're seeing. So, you know, having, not having sections, you know, with through the plan, or drainage, grading plans, and so on, traffic analysis, things like that, just allows, don't maybe to give our full input into what you're asking for. So, to the extent that you can, we can do that, or time it so that we get to see those things, I think we just add more value to the process if we see them, so. So, that's the big issue. You know, the, I think, somebody brought up the intent about E470, you know, I think the town's position is, at least this current board is, to not support that road, and so, discouraging traffic through town is, I think, part of this, slowing the speeds along McCaslin is probably far more beneficial to the residents along, in Rock Creek and along that area than, you know, potentially widening the road in the future. So, I think that's the motive, in my opinion, of, you know, part of this, so. Let's see, you know, I think it might have been a good idea just to incrementally improve the intersection a bit, the light, but given the trailhead is there, I do agree that this will be a nice amenity to the town, just as the 88th Street is not only a nice amenity, but it was a must at the time it was built, and I think over time, we may find that this was, this is really, you know, a nice amenity. I do agree that I would like to see some type of improvement at both Colton and Indiana because of the children crossing there to get to the school. I think that may be one of the, should be one of the higher priorities in town, and also even Indiana at McCaslin, because that, the speeds of people coming down, down the hill and making the turn.
Indiana continues up to McCaslin.
Indiana and McCaslin.
Oh, right. Yeah, sorry.
So, anyway, let's see, I'm not very concerned, actually, about the narrowing of the streets and the signage. I think the explanation of taking those speeds from 45 to 35 to 25 is adequate and appropriate, and will, you know, once you've driven through the one on Rock Creek Parkway, you know, if you've done it a few times, it's a piece of cake. And this one, as you said, is even easier as a single-lane roundabout. I've seen trucks negotiate lots of roundabouts of many sizes, and I would look at, to the example that we were shown during the 88th Street Roundabout was Old Golden Road. For those of you that've been through Old Golden Road, there are lots of trucks that negotiate the roundabouts on Old Golden Road, far newer than we'll ever probably in a day than we might see in a week or something superior, so.
What's Old Golden Road?
In Golden, there's a section of Old Golden Road that has a number of roundabouts that were put in that greatly improved the efficiency of that road.
Is that on the way to I-70 at McIntyre or?
No. No, you have to basically go from downtown to where the school lines is, and then go towards Bell Middle School and that area. So, anyway, if you've ever driven through there, you'll know that lots of traffic and lots of trucks that things move through there very efficiently, and I don't see this as really any different than that. So, you know, I think if we can, the pedestrian safety issue is important, most important, but I think this intersection, having people going at 17 or 18 miles an hour is vastly superior to people going 45 miles an hour through an intersection at a, what we hope will be a very heavily-used trailhead. So, you know, having to only cross 12 feet at a time is great for pedestrians, it's great for kids, just, you know, so much better to create a pedestrian-scale atmosphere leading to that trailhead, so, in my opinion. Thanks. Those, Matt, you feel like you've got a pretty good handle on what those comments are?
Yeah, I tried to write down as much as I could, but I'll go back and listen to the video. Try to get those to the board by this packet that goes out this week still.
Okay. Okay. Are we good? Okay. So, moving on, that completes item five, comments on the trailhead. We'll move quickly through staff announcements miscellaneous.
Yes, just real quick, I wanted to let the planning commission know that on Monday, Remington Homes is going to give another concept plan for the Oxford property. All right. And the new plan calls for 53 single-family homes, basically on the northern 21 acres of the property.
Can we receive a copy of that prior to?
Friday, yeah.
Okay.
Right, Friday, you should. Thursday, possibly, but no later than Friday you'll receive. So, if you'd like to attend, please feel free. And that'll start at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM on Monday.
6:00 PM on Monday.
And you say we will be getting a packet on that?
This week still.
Thank you.
The first reading of the ordinance for the greenbuild residential codes, greenbuilding codes, is scheduled for Monday, April 13th, so that's moving forward. Hopefully, we'll have it adopted by the end of April, and then 30 days after that, it'll take effect, so we've got some public education to do, so we'll be working on that. And then, in case the planning commission's interested, which I know many of you are, we released a request for proposals to install solar panels on the majority of our town facilities, and we received seven proposals back. We're going through the review now and schedule interviews with a number of those companies next week and have something hopefully this month or early May for consideration to install.
Is that something that will come to us?
You know, we haven't discussed that. It depends on timing. We are trying to take advantage of the stimulus money that's coming forward for projects like this, so if we can, most definitely. The three major sites with the largest systems are the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant in Town Hall, so, that's it for me.
Okay. Just a reminder that we're actually gonna adjourn the regular meeting of the planning commission and move into a work session after this to discuss chapter 16, the first 50 pages, so get that part, but just so if you're up for land use code excitement discussion, stick around for that, so. Anything else? Okay. So, we'll adjourn the regular meeting of the planning commission. Thank you.